Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting of June 4th, 2020. Please meet as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which it stands, one nation.
For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still working on mastering the flag via Zoom.
Yeah, it's not so easy via Zoom. It is my favorite board meeting of the year. It's supposed to be in April, but we'll do it in June. That's fine because we get to celebrate people who have dedicated their careers to Putnam Valley and are moving on to the next stage of their life, as well as acknowledging those people that are just starting their careers in Putnam Valley. So Jeremy, can I turn it over to you while I get board docs up because it just collapsed?
Sure, you got it. Alright, so this is obviously a very exciting meeting for everyone, though it's certainly not the same as being able to have everyone in the room together and having a true little celebration, but we held out hope that we would get there and obviously we are not yet there. So I'm hopeful that a virtual ceremony will work for now and more importantly, we'll have the opportunity to sort of honor our retirees and acknowledge our tenure recipients in the best way we can in the midst of all of this madness. So as I had mentioned before, when each person, when it's their turn, I'll, assuming that they're on as an attendee, I'll promote them to a panelist so they'll show up like everyone else. This way, the person speaking to them can actually physically see them and if they would like to say something, they would certainly have the opportunity to do so. So as we go down the list, I will promote each person and we'll go that way. So I'm looking at my list. I don't know if the principals have pre-fought over who goes first?
Just according to Natalie's list, that's all.
Alright, so it bounces around. So we're gonna go straight down Natalie's list. You guys gotta all pay attention then. Alright?
Or you want to group them or just straight down? Okay.
No, well, let's mix it up. Alright, so our first tenure recipient will be Christian Evans and Ms. Margaret Podesta will speak. Dr. Podesta will speak. Let me just see if I could find Evans on here. I do not see him on here.
He's hiding.
Alright, so I don't see him on as attendee. He's probably watching on YouTube, so go for it.
Well, this is a very happy night for Putnam Valley Elementary. I am so proud and honored to be here to celebrate the tenure of Christian Evans. He came to us several years ago, just so loving and caring about children, creative, and obviously we know, very musically talented. But the biggest gift that I would say that we're celebrating with Christian tonight is his willingness to learn, his willingness to take feedback and run with it. He's collaborative. He can teach first grade, he can teach fourth grade and everything in between. His lessons are creative and he relates to parents extremely well. Parents trust him. They want to hear about their children from him and he serves as a wonderful role model for boys and girls in his classes. And he's just a true wonderful addition to our elementary staff and we're lucky to have him. So congratulations, Christian.
Congratulations.
Can we clap?
Alright, so Margaret, you're gonna be up again. Mr. Brandon Ouish and I will promote him on here. Here he comes.
There I am.
There he is.
Hey, everyone. How we doing?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Hi, Brandon. Congratulations. A really, really great night. As we know, Brandon came to us a few years ago when a nearby district had to do some cuts and their loss was truly our gain. When I called a principal for a reference, all he could say was, "You're getting a rock star." And we certainly have gotten that rock star. I'm proud to say that Brandon has become a true leader in our building already. He steps up to lead the way, whether it's the crisis team and now the reentry task force. He's a true example setter in the classroom with the way he designs lessons to meet student needs. The differentiation is outstanding along with the children's ability to think, to converse with each other and to problem solve in very creative and deep-thinking ways. Brandon is an extremely talented teacher and I will continue to learn from Brandon for years to come. I'm just so honored and we are very fortunate to have him here. Congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I look forward to being here for many more years to come. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Thanks, Tom. You as well. I meant to say before in the type, but I didn't know if you could see my typing or not, Tom.
And Brandon's been, you know, Brandon's been very busy since he came to Putnam Valley too. He, you know, bought a house, changed jobs. They had one baby, then they had another baby. He's not sitting still either.
Everyone's asleep now, so we're good.
Okay, good.
Alright, congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so our next recipient is Ms. Leanne Johnson. So Mr. McCarty. Hold on, she'll be right up.
Alright, good evening, everyone. This is a special evening for Putnam Valley Middle School. We have a number of people receiving tenure and it would have been beautiful to have in person, but we're hopeful to do this justice in this manner. So, you know, Leanne Johnson came to us a few years ago now and she's probably had to adapt the most in her short time at PVMS. She's had a number of different content areas to focus on. However, she's found a home in the area of math and science at our sixth grade level. She works extremely well with her partner in sixth grade pod and provides a great balance. When instructing students, she has put an onus on table captains and allowing students to navigate the work as a team. Through collaboration, students have learned to take leadership roles in a student-centered approach. This model is one that instills in students the ability to discover and learn the how and the why as opposed to just learning the facts. Leanne also runs our jewelry club and has helped to coordinate our annual PVMS blood drive, which Karen Brothers helped to organize for many years. It is a collaborative effort on the sixth grade team, but Leanne does quite a bit of the work. I'm confident that Leanne will continue to advocate for the team approach and adapt to these ever-changing times. And I know she works extremely well with Mrs. Stein and we're very happy to have her. She's an amazing artist as well, very, very creative in all of her lessons. And if you walk into her classroom, it's extremely visible with just the ability of everything she's able to do. So congratulations, Leanne.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, Travis.
I'm gonna start an investigation where you guys are getting all these fancy haircuts from.
My sister's a hairdresser.
That would happen. I didn't know if you found my underground barber.
Thank you, Travis.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright, so our next recipient is Ms. Jamie Hannigan. Let's bring her on board.
So Jamie's one of those teachers that always talks about the positive qualities and characteristics of every child. In fact, sometimes it's difficult for her to talk about what students really need to work on because she's so positive all the time. This is a wonderful quality that she has. She's always smiling, always sees the best in every single child. She's always in constant communication with her partner, teacher, Mrs. Cohen, and they make a wonderful team. Jamie's in constant communication with her students and families as well and they appreciate this transparency. When faced with challenging students, Jamie will attempt various techniques and her caring qualities help her to reach even those most challenging students. Jamie's helped to run the Homework Booster Lab for a number of years now and our own PVMS book club. I'm sure that Jamie will continue to have a positive outlook and adapt to these ever-changing times in meeting the needs of all students first and foremost. Congratulations, Jamie, and keep smiling, keep that positive personality that you bring to the sixth grade team. It's an asset.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Alright, so next up is Ms. Nanette Romanello.
Oh, good. I have the pleasure. Nanette, she's up.
She's up.
Hi, Nanette. So I have truly the pleasure. Nanette started off in our district as a teaching aide. Her children went through the district and then she later became a teacher. And honestly, we really have watched Nanette grow as a professional. And through the years, she just, her teaching skills just keep getting better. She's always seeking professional development to enhance her skills. She's incredibly kind. I remember one time she knew that a student would really want whatever they left in class and it was, we were going on to either a long weekend or vacation. So she just, you know, making sure that she brought that thing to that student's home and dropped it off to them. Just those little things about always going above and beyond and just always looking to enhance her, her teaching skills. And we're truly lucky to have Nanette and congratulations, really.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nanette.
So next up is Ms. Mary Sullivan.
Great. So me again. So Mary was an intern for us and she, the year that she was graduating, we had a position open. Hi, Mary. So Mary, from the get-go, I've never, as a school psychologist, you entrust so much into them and their care of students and their families. So for an administrator to know that the students are in such great hands and their families is just really such a relief. And Mary has exemplified what it is to be a school psychologist in terms of building trust and relationships with countless families. On any given evening, you can find Mary at the school, working very long hours, very dedicated employee, who just truly wants to put supports in place for her students. She also evaluated, part of her job is to evaluate students and the way in which she analyzes the data that she collects. We're able to really put supports in place for students that allow them to do the best, you know, to their abilities and to make sure that they're able to progress in ways that they need to. So she's just been an outstanding employee and quite a team with all of the administrators. I think I speak for Margaret, Tom, Jeanette, Jeremy, truly just so dependable and trustworthy. So congratulations, Mary.
Thank you so much. I'm so grateful to be a part of the Putnam Valley community. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mary.
I just have to say a quick word to Mary and that is that when I started as AP, was when Mary started as an intern and she quickly became a very good friend and a trusted person. And I don't know that I would have survived so many situations if it wasn't for Mary. And like Natalie says, she cares so deeply for children. And Mary, I love you so much and I'm so proud of you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it and I appreciate your support.
Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Now Mary can go have her baby. She's all set.
Oh yes, go have a baby, Mary. Go have a baby.
Next week.
You didn't look pregnant.
I'll save a room for you, Mary. Alright, so next up is Mr. Jake Nynan.
Good evening, everybody. Is Jake there?
Yeah.
I just want to know, is your wife in the audience so she hears everything this time?
Uh, no, she's holding down the rest of the house right now, so.
Because she usually doesn't believe you when you say I say good things about you.
Yeah, I'll play it for her later. Don't worry.
Being recorded.
So it's my pleasure to congratulate you and recommend you for tenure. As anybody knows, it's extremely hard to find a really good science teacher, especially one that's dual-certified in chemistry and living environment. And you come to PV with a wealth of experience, a wealth of strategies, a wealth of knowledge about how to support students and you've been just an invaluable member of the Science Department. And as also everybody knows, I don't think anybody new has been hired in that Science Department for the past 15, 10 to 15 years. So to successfully break in and become a positive collaborator shows what a great personality Mr. Nynan has. He is extremely professional all the time, but he also has a very dry, quick wit that his students love and his peers love and his principal loves. And I've seen him in a variety of situations, whether it's teaching Gen Chem with a collaborative teacher or whether it's chemistry or living environment and the students are always engaged and he's willing to do whatever it takes to help them to succeed. And it's just been a joy to watch his creativity in the classroom. And he's brought so many fresh ideas that many of his peers have followed and taken his guidance on. And I just appreciate all that he's brought to our faculty and I'm just so happy you're a part of it and we're privileged to have you at PVHS.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dreary. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jake. Alright, so next up is going to be Ms. Tarkington.
There we go. Hi, Shannon.
Hi.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to recommend Shannon Tarkington for tenure again. Shannon is not new to PV. Respectively, she has been a special ed teacher extraordinaire in our building and it was her choice to go over to the Gen Ed lane and take on her own classroom in general education, which she has done to a fantastic degree of excellence. Shannon has a wonderfully-run, very warm, very imaginative classroom. The thing about Shannon, if I had to describe one thing, besides being very detail-oriented and accountable in all ways, she keeps those kids working to high standards and you know what they do? They get there. And I just can't say enough about the opportunity for any child to be enrolled in her class because the standards will be high and she will support them to get there. And I mean that in all ways, whether it's data you're looking at or creativity or writing skills. It's just, it's just extremely motivating to see what she can do with kids. She's been a grade-level coordinator this year. She's an extremely effective leader, a great communicator, a real team player. And I was telling third grade today how proud I am of who they are as a team and how they work in our building and the example they set for the entire school. And she's leading them and it shows. So Shannon, I'm just so happy you're part of our community. I'm happy to be here with you and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Dr. Podesta. I'm so thrilled to be in Putnam Valley.
I just have to jump in one more time. Shannon was my mentee when she first started at Putnam Valley and it seems like so long ago, but I'm so proud of you, Shannon. I'm so proud of all the work you've done here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so next up is Ms. Angela Methans.
Hi, Angela. So I've had the privilege of knowing Angela for quite some time now. She's actually came to us from the high school as a former ELA teacher and her wish was to become a part of our ENL program. And when Angela came over, I asked of her to be a leader. I asked her to have leadership qualities and her ingenuity, organization and collaborative skills really set her apart. Every teacher that you talk to will rave about being able to work with Angela and when faced with difficult situations and challenges, she really rises above and she addresses inequities and really is an advocate for every family. Angela works hard in leveling the playing field. She goes above and beyond with our PVMS potluck dinner, which is well-attended every year and addressing various cultures with our bulletin boards and announcements throughout the year. She adapts to the ever-changing times and we look forward to working with her for many years to come. It's a privilege to work with her every day and I just want to congratulate her on receiving tenure because I know it's difficult to change tenure tracks and teachers really, really enjoy working with her and it's almost like they want to be with her, collabing at every grade level they have the chance to. So congratulations, Angela. I know she got a new cat this week as well, so she has her hands full, but she's phenomenal.
Congratulations, Angela.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Angela.
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to say that I went from one family in the high school with Sandy to another family in the high school with Travis and Kern and all of my colleagues. Thank you for supporting the change that I decided to make.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Angela.
Thank you.
Take care. Congratulations again.
Alright, so next up is going to be Erin Scopini.
Okay, hi. I'll start talking about Erin. Erin came to us just a few, well, there's pretty sure. There we go. Hi, Erin. Congratulations to you on this very important night in your career. Putnam Valley is a sweeter, better place because you joined us. Erin is a very talented teacher who loves to get to know her students, figure out what they need and make sure it happens. She, we learn from her. Her team raves about her technological skills and her creativity with this. And I know you've been a real leader with distance learning. So thank you, Erin, for stepping up and really leading the way. Erin collaborates with everyone. Anyone would love to work with Erin because she is so collaborative, so thoughtful and so talented in her skills already, early in her career. So we are lucky to have you. We look forward to many years with you and we know that you're busy with your little baby at home, but you know what? You're doing great in school and all around. So we thank you. So congratulations.
Thank you. I love to be a part of Putnam Valley for years to come.
Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Erin.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Funny because I found Erin's resume on OLOS, had nothing to do with Putnam Valley. Nothing. And found her through her credentials. She came in and what do you know? She knew people in Putnam Valley. She married somebody, had relations in Putnam Valley. Putnam Valley's the center of the world.
We knew right away when she walked out the door, we said, "We need her. We need her."
Congrats, Erin.
Thank you.
Alright, so next up is Mr. Danko, who we're assuming is watching live.
So I am going to speak about Matt Danko. So Matt is a high school special education teacher and he came in for an interview. First I saw his resume and it was so unusual because he had multiple certifications, but then also had this vocational certification and just an interesting background. So when we interviewed him, right away, we were excited to bring somebody with just really a different teaching style, very hands-on, very engaging and somebody who we thought really could make a connection with students who may struggle in math and Matt teaches math as one of his subjects. And, you know, I've gone into his classroom numerous times and students who may not ordinarily be leaders are leaders in his classroom. Were up in front of the class, teaching the other students. Felt like you saw a confidence in these students that you didn't ordinarily see. And it was just really, it's been refreshing to have Matt as part of our team, as part of our special ed family and the high school family. And he just really brings a great style and his ability to connect with students has really, I think, helped move our students in a direction that we were looking to move in a positive way. So congratulations, Matt. It's been a great experience watching you and you've brought a lot to our team. So congratulations.
Congrats, Matt. Alright.
Congrats, Matt.
Our final tenure recipient for this evening is going to be Ms. Olivia Roth.
Hi, Olivia.
Hi.
So Olivia has come to us this school year. She joined our sixth grade team and she's become a valuable member since coming over from the elementary school. You know, Olivia had mentioned to me that early on in her career, she had taught in Hawaii and she spent four years in Hawaii and then came to Putnam Valley and in her fourth year, she moved to the middle school. I'm hopeful to, you know, promise her that in four years, she doesn't switch buildings because we'd love to keep her at the middle school. Her passion for math and science is evident in everything that she does. And working in a collaborative environment, she is in constant communication with her cooperating teacher and they make a very strong team. She's firm, yet flexible, responsive to all student and family needs and is a role model for all. Olivia is extremely confident and caring and we appreciate the approach she has toward challenges and working with her sixth grade team. I'm confident that she'll continue to adapt to these changing times and will continue to instill these values of being lifelong learners in all the students that she teach. Congratulations, Olivia. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats, Olivia.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
I would like to put it on record that if she'd like to come back to the elementary school, she's welcome.
No, I have the ability to mute you at any time, right?
Loved having you and you spent three years with us and we missed you. Congratulations.
Thank you. That's the nice thing about Putnam Valley. No matter where you go, you always feel like a part of the family, supported. So thank you.
Well said. Congrats, Olivia.
Thanks.
Alright, we do have one more tenure recipient and I'm sure he'll accuse me of skipping him on purpose, but I promise it was just an accident. So we have Mr. Ryan Elsasser.
Is Ryan here?
He is not.
Okay. Congratulations, Ryan. Ryan was a student teacher here at Putnam Valley, which I know other people on the panel were also student teachers here. He came back to Putnam Valley in 2015 as a part-timer. That was the second time he was here. I think he's been the longest run in a school district without receiving tenure because of those part-time years. He coached JV baseball, varsity football, varsity golf. Multiple varsity sports in one year is a lot to undertake. The thing that really is noticeable about Ryan is the students just connect with him. They want to go to his class when they have free time, when they have any, you know, they go in there just to hang out, to talk about different... they go in there just to hang out, to talk about different things that they have going on in school. No matter what that happens to be, they gravitate towards him, taking extra classes and so on and so forth. He runs Powder Puff Football, which is a fundraiser for juniors and seniors. He's been a class advisor. He volunteers for just about anything that he's been asked to do. So much so that sometimes you want him to take a timeout and focus on the few things that he started with. But he just never says no. If you want him to do something, he's the one that's there. You call him first, he's there anytime. You forget a chaperone, he's there. You need a timer, he's there. You know, when you hire somebody in a school district, you hope that they get involved. And you want them to be involved in that greater school community. And I think that Ryan is proven time and time again that he's that type of person. And I think Putnam Valley is much better off for having him here. So congratulations Ryan.
Congrats Ryan, I didn't skip you on purpose, I promise. All right, so I know we already spoke about Mr. Evans, but Dr. Podesta told me that he should have to join the meeting like everyone else. So we're going to throw him on here.
I'm old, I just turned 40, so, okay, now I got it, I'm not muted. Oh, start video, okay, one more, here I am, all right. Sorry about that, I was putting my daughter to bed, but yeah, hi.
Margaret, you're on. There we go, I said beautiful things about you Christian. We're so lucky to have you, we love how you grow, how you connect with students and parents. We love to watch you play that guitar, we love all that you bring to a classroom, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations Christian.
Thank you.
Congratulations Christian. Happy for you.
Thank you guys all for all your support in different ways. I really appreciate it and it means a lot to me, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good one. All right, so that ends our tenure recipients for real this time. And now we'll move on to the stars of the evening. Our four retirees that we're going to acknowledge. And the first retiree is Ms. Regina Albano. Bring her on.
Do we have to?
Regina, do you have the tissues ready?
I'm in serious.
I know, me too. So I'm going to speak about Regina and certainly other people can jump in. I've worked with Regina, I've been in Putnam Valley for 18 years. And those 18 years Regina has done so many different teaching positions. But first, in terms of special education and just her teaching and her ability to connect with students. It was never about, she always made connections between the community and feeling part of a community and being a student in Putnam Valley. And really made sure that any student that she worked with was able to access their education in a way that worked for them. Would go out of her way to make sure that students felt supported. Making sure that they, you know, she kept, she kept on top of them all the time. Making sure their assignments were done and done well. Making sure that she had connections with their families. And really, you know, when you're, when you're in Putnam Valley for so many years, you, you go through so much together. And you know, we've, we've had, you know, weddings and celebrations and sad times. And you know, for Regina, she was always part of those. Made sure that she was sort of a leader in making sure those things, that everybody was connected during those times. And it was just a great, a great experience. And she just makes people feel like they're really important. And I couldn't, I really appreciate it. She is truly going to be missed as a, from our department. I know that the special ed teachers in her department value her. She has always supported them. And where she's going to be missed, really missed. And her leadership in those areas, you know, are going to be missed. But I know she's going to keep a connection. I know she has a great, some great next steps and great plans and to see her grandson and to live near him and her family. And that is just priceless and I'm excited for her. So congratulations Regina.
And I just want to add in, you know, I want to thank Regina for making me feel welcome in Putnam Valley. There's no doubt how much she loves her school, she loves her community and she loves the kids. And she will do whatever it takes to make things work, whatever the plans are. And to be involved in anything she can be to show her support. And I just am going to miss her and wish her all the best in her retirement.
Can I jump in before, before we move on? If, I think it would be, we'd be missing a big part if we didn't talk about coaching a little bit. And I wrote this down, so if I look like I'm staring blankly, it's because I'm reading here. But Regina is the type of person that you hope coaches your student athletes. Her dedication to the students and community is absolutely above and beyond. She was a cheerleader in Lakeland Central School District. And once she joined the Putnam Valley teaching team, her coaching career began. She is now a 37-year veteran cheerleading coach. She has won countless awards that have recognized her efforts to promote the sport and student athletes in not only Putnam Valley community, but Section 1 in New York State as well. She received the Coach of Year Award honors in 2018 for the Westchester Putnam Duchess and Rockland County Cheerleading Coaches Association, which is just an incredible honor. She is undefeated in sectional competition, having won five sectional titles in a row from 2016 to 2020. In that time, she has led the team to two New York State silver medals in 2017 and 2019. New York State bronze in 2018 and 2020. When she isn't coaching, she's a special education teacher as well as family and consumer science teacher at Putnam Valley High School and Middle School. Her dedication to the school community is beyond reproach. In addition to the countless hours she puts in to support her classroom students, she has brought many events to the Putnam Valley, to Putnam Valley community, leading the philanthropic charge for the school in many ways. She's been a class advisor many times, brought the Harlem Wizards fundraiser to the school at least a half a dozen times, runs a huge Tiger tournament for Section 1 cheerleading, which PV hosts but doesn't actually compete in. She's run school-wide Powder Puff Football fundraisers for about 10 years now for the junior and senior class. Most recently, she's helped fundraise an entire trip for the team to go to NCA Nationals in Texas, where they came in third place. The above accomplishments are just a glimpse of what Coach Regina has brought to this school and community over her incredible career. She's retiring this year and moving to Wisconsin to be close to her grandchild and family. And I can honestly say that it will take a team of people to try to fill the shoes Regina is stepping away from. We wish her all the best, she's amazing. Her family is lucky to have her positive energy and attitude joining them in her next adventure. And that was actually a recommendation letter that I wrote, which she was just awarded a nomination for the New York State NFHS Coaches Award for cheerleading for Coach of the Year. So we'll find out in January, but I think pretty much after hearing her accomplishments, to us, she deserves it. So congratulations in your next adventure Regina.
Congratulations Regina.
I just want to say congratulations Regina and you know, thank you for the friendship throughout all these years, whether we were out there on athletic field or you know, sitting in the cafeteria with a, with a study hall. It's been great working with you and really enjoy the time. We're going to miss you here at Putnam Valley.
I'd like to congratulate Regina as well. I think she's Putnam Valley's greatest cheerleader, to be honest. You know, she came over to the middle school a few years ago. I needed her to fill the family and consumer science position. And boy, and I wish that I started my career with her teaching facts because the kids just connect with her. She's so hands-on, she's so adaptable. And you know, it's hard to follow what Brian and Matt and Natalie have said about her. But Regina, we're going to miss you greatly. I know you're going to be a cheese head out in Wisconsin. Enjoy your family. It's going to take a lot of people to fill your shoes, thank you.
So I actually have a couple of quick personal things about Ms. Albano, who was an unnamed number of years ago, my teacher. And during those years, I'll never forget that she, she taught me how to sew and I remained the only person in my household who knows how to sew. And she let us run restaurant and we got to come up with the menu, cook all the food and serve all the meals. And I do remember one very convincing conversation she had with me in middle school about how I should quit basketball and join her cheerleading team because she was trying to get some male cheerleaders. And I guess at the time, had I realized how successful of a cheerleading coach she was, I probably should have taken her up on the offer. I would have had a more successful career in there than I did in basketball. So I did want to take a moment to congratulate her, she'll be deeply missed. And I know that her family will be grateful to have her close to them, so congratulations Regina. We're going to leave her on as we jump to the next one. All right, so our next retiree is Ms. Chris Krill.
Hi Chris. So I'm going to speak about Chris Krill. She actually came over to the middle school a few years ago. And we're very lucky to have had her come to the middle school, really toward the end of her career. And you know, when Chris came over from the elementary school, I knew we were extremely lucky. She's well-spoken, thoughtful and firm. She has a way of reaching all students through various teaching techniques. In fact, I've learned so much from sitting in on her class and just watching the way that she connects with students. And sometimes students that are very hard to connect with, that might be really challenging. Chris has led the fifth grade team as a team leader and is always so inquisitive and always looking for better ways of doing something. Her years of experience have been detrimental in addressing the standards and doing what's best for all students. I will miss her leadership and her ability to work with anyone. I want to wish Chris the best in her retirement and I know that she'll forever be a teacher. In fact, when she shared with me she was retiring, my son is coming over to the middle school next year. And I had said, can you give me one more year? But it was already in the cards to retire, so I just, I want to wish her the best. I know that she is a true leader and really invaluable to our community. And you know, she did spend the majority of her career at the elementary school. And I had heard such great things of, you know, her leadership at the elementary school as well. So thank you Chris for your many years of service and your leadership.
I just want to also thank Chris, when I started here at Putnam Valley, she was my mentor and she was a great support to me. So thank you so much Chris and congratulations.
I'm going to just say, I have to jump into, you know, I worked, I've worked with Chris for, you know, 18 years also. And she is truly an amazing teacher who is soft but firm, knows her content, delivers it in a way that, you know, all types of learners are able to participate, to understand and to progress in her classroom. She has high expectations, but yet is warm and caring. And I am really going to miss Chris tremendously, so congratulations Chris.
And I'll thank Chris for her leadership in the elementary school when she was there as a building rep when I first came and her open communication and honesty and integrity. And there is no time wasted in her classroom. The time is used efficiently, the kids are there to do what they're going to do and have fun while they're doing it. So we're very happy for you Chris and we'll miss you, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congrats Chris. So Chris isn't on yet, but I do see Regina's on now with someone who looks like a miniature Nicholas to me. So let's, let's jump to Regina and then we'll come back to Chris. Go ahead Regina.
Hi, I just want to say thank you all for the kind words. I didn't realize I was on, I was on mute and wasn't on the video. But I, I can't even say anything, I'm just going to miss Putnam Valley a lot. And I thank you all for the 30 years I had there. And you're one big family and just can't be replaced.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're going to make me cry.
Oh, I know.
But Putnam Valley is, Putnam Valley is a better place because you were here.
Thank you.
I, I also didn't realize I was muted.
No worries.
Okay.
You're up now, go for it.
All right, 32 years goes by in a, in a flash. And I grew up in Putnam Valley. I started as a 22-year-old, brand-new teacher. Thank you John Klinegris for taking a chance on me. I feel like I grew up in Putnam Valley. You offered me so much as a teacher, as a community member, just everything. I raised my children there, pretty much. It was, it's just been a tremendous career and I am so grateful, so thank you everyone.
Thank you Chris.
Congrats Chris.
Congratulations.
And Chris, I want to personally thank you. Your board experience sometimes made me feel a little more sane because you knew what we were going through, so thank you.
True, true words.
All right, so now we'll jump over to the dynamic duo of Team Spurling.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Scott. Am I starting with Scott or Deb?
You pick, since you're doing both.
All right, Scott. Scott Spurling, where do I start? Well, Scott began teaching fifth grade here at Putnam Valley in September of 1988. Prior to Putnam Valley, Scott taught in Rochelle. Anyone who knows Scott knows that he is dedicated to public education and more so dedicated to providing an above and beyond educational experience for each and every child in his class. We are so fortunate that Scott chose education. If anyone has ever attended a holiday gathering or an end-of-the-year retirement party, then you know that Scott is a highly skilled DJ. And he certainly could have taken a different career path, so we're glad he chose teaching. Scott brought his creativity and interest into all of his work with children. This is visible in his passionate teaching, his captivating read-alouds, his pictures of his personal travels that he shared and connected to his lesson objectives, his love of the outdoors and outdoor education and of course, the beloved shadow play, which incorporated literacy, dramatic and artistic expression, history, public speaking, all through an extremely unique presentation and use of shadows. Spurlo, as his students call him, gave special nicknames to each of his students and always inspired them to learn from every experience in life. I'll personally never forget my visits to his classroom and the warm, welcoming feeling that I had every time I entered. And I know if I felt that way, that his students surely did. Scott created a home away from home for his students and a school experience that they will never forget. Scott will be greatly missed at PV, but I look forward to hearing about all of the places that he will travel and all of the new adventures that he will experience. Scott, thank you for being you. Thank you for your humor, for your Super Bowl data collection, for your end-of-the-year pool parties and of course, for your connections with children that will remain with them forever. Congratulations on your retirement.
Congratulations Scott, Putnam Valley will not be the same without you. And I think we could all agree to that. Your Halloween costumes, your room decor, none of it will be forgotten. So thank you for being you and you've impacted many, many lives.
So I also have a quick Spurling, Scott. So I also have a, a quick, uh, Spurling, Scott Spurling story. So, um, back when New Kids on the Block were all the rage and I had hair, I had the, the privilege of, maybe the unfortunate, uh, privilege of being in the adjacent classroom to, uh, Mr. Spurling's class in what was a, described as a red trailer that was half falling apart. And, uh, during those years, I spent much of my year having what could only be defined as a Spurling envy. They always seemed to, um, get a little extra time out there on the big toy. And I was convinced for half a year that he bought in some special speaker on Friday afternoons. And the kids would yell and scream and trade in tickets for prizes. I think I was working on fractions in the classroom next door. But, um, it was, I was very envious of all the fun and all the learning that went on in that classroom. And, um, he certainly will be missed by many, many students, many, many teachers. And, uh, wish him only the best of luck in retirement. So congratulations, Scott. All right, so now we'll move on to Deb Spurling.
Okay. Um, Deb began, Deb Spurling began teaching at Putnam Valley in 1987 at the elementary school. She taught first grade for, I believe, 10 years. Um, her extensive training in reading recovery then led her to support young children through the PVES Early Intervention Reading Program. In 2007, she returned to the classroom, teaching first grade. When I began teaching at Putnam Valley, Deb was one of the first teachers that I had the pleasure to connect and work with. I remember celebrating her birthday with the grade level team. And as a new Putnam Valley teacher at the time, I was so delighted to see the care and the friendship that existed between this group of teachers. And Deb's strong connection with her colleagues still remains to this day. There are so many things that I admire about Deb, but most of all, it is her advocacy, passion and love for young children. Deb will always be the mama critter in her classes filled with little critters. Her classroom is a magical place with reading nooks and cushioned benches and filled with special decor that could be featured in a magazine. No matter what Deb, what, no matter what classroom Deb was assigned, she always made the space comfy and cozy for her kids. When I think of summers at the elementary school, I feel as if Deb, Deb was there almost every summer day, putting the finishing touches on her classroom. Deb is highly skilled, highly skilled, at teaching young children, particularly in the area of literacy. She has high expectations for her students and is exceptional at building student confidence, pushing students to achieve more and creating authentic learning experiences for them. Like that of another Spurling teacher previously mentioned, Deb has gone up above and beyond to ensure that her students receive the best school experience possible. Her love of nature was always entwined within her teaching and present in her classroom, from painting fall trees with her children outside to baking pumpkin bread and celebrating Earth Day each year. What I loved most about visiting Deb's classroom was that she never wanted me to leave. I loved sitting on her carpet with her students. She always wanted to show off her little critters' achievements, listen to them recite their high-frequency words, write simple and complex sentences, read poetry and sing songs. Deb takes great pride in every step her critters take. I will miss Deb's sense of humor and her stories about parenting Shelley, Sarah and Stephen, and at times Scott, and always gave me hope as a mom that the hard work of parenting pays off. Just kidding, Scott. While I'm sad to think about Deb's retirement, I am confident that she will continue to inspire others in the future, in her future travels and endeavors. I can't imagine her sitting still, so I know there will be great things to come. Congratulations on your retirement, Deb. And before I wrap up, I do feel the need to kind of group Scott and Deb Spurling together for just a moment. And I'd like to say that the Spurlings have a very strong presence in Putnam Valley and have been an active family in the PV community. And they have made very close and caring relationships with families inside and outside of school. I believe that they may have created unknowingly the largest celebration parade in history of cars. Thank you, Deb and Scott, for all of your years of service to Putnam Valley.
Thank you, Jeanette. You said it all there, but congratulations, Deb. And the sense of community you build in your classroom is beyond compare. So that will not be forgotten either. And we're very happy for you and we know you have many years ahead with lots, lots to look forward to. So thank you and congratulations.
Are we on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. It's hard to believe that 33 years have come and gone. Um, a shout-out to John Kleineris and Mary Ann Doyle for, uh, as Chris said earlier, Chris and I came on almost at the same time. Um, and they took a risk on a, a college kid fresh out of school. And, uh, who, who knew 33 years later I would still be there? So I thank you for, um, the years that I've had there, all of the families and the students that I have had the pleasure to, uh, get close to and to teach. And, uh, early literacy has always been where my heart is and my heart remains at the elementary school. Whether I'm there or not, I will always be a part of the elementary school.
Thank you to everyone. Congratulations to the, my fellow retirees and, uh, to the newly-tenured folks, congratulations to you as well. It is always nice to hear these kind words from the so-called higher-ups, but it is going to be what the kids say about you in your careers that are really gonna define you. So always remember that, uh, because they're gonna mean the most. And, uh, I, I also was hired with John Kleineris to principal and Mary Ann Doyle, the superintendent. And, um, it was, it was amazing time to be in education then. And, uh, I'm grateful to them. I do want to shout out, uh, Guy Cohen, because he was there when we were hired. He was there when we got tenure and he's still here as we retire. And, uh, that is dedication to the utmost degree.
Thank you, Guy.
So.
So thank you both, thank you both.
So I do want to acknowledge for the four retirees, certainly no one, um, expected or wanted to eat the, your last years to end the way it has. So I understand that there's probably a great deal of disappointment on your, on your behalfs to not be able to sort of spend that last spring in the classrooms with your students. I was especially looking forward to, um, to see what kind of creative things Scott was gonna do with his kids through those last few months and having those last few trips. And I, I'm sure that there's a great deal of disappointment, uh, to not have the opportunity to do so. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that, um, that's something that's certainly been, um, in my head, uh, for some time and especially since the decision was made to close schools for the remainder of the year. It was a, a terrible feeling for all four of you, knowing that you're missing sort of your, your last few months in your, in the classroom with the last group of students that you'll really be with. So, um, it's an unfortunate part of what's going on in the world, but I, I did want to recognize that. And I also wanted just to mention which, in a Putnam Valley tradition, your fancy retirement clock, it will be mailed to each of your homes. So this is just a demo stolen from Pat Bolino. So, uh, this will be shipped directly to your house and just in recognition of your many years of service. So congratulations again, uh, to all of you.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys go now, so. Bye-bye.
It's got to be sad and happy at the same time, Jeremy.
Okay. They were welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I'm not sure they wanted to. All right. Ms. Ruffo, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, I have to back up.
Yes, we skipped a couple of things, it's okay.
I on, am I, I skipped a couple of things because my board docs are all over the place. So, um, let me pull one thing over. This is a, Nick, I'm coming back to the office for the next meeting because this is, I'm having lots of technical difficulties. But I'd like to approve, a resolution to approve the minutes from the, I'll tell you in a minute, from the, um, meetings held on May 5th, May 19th and May 26th.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to announce that the treasurer's report for March 2020 is available in the business office. And now Dr. Loff, I'm turning it back to you for your superintendent's report.
What we want to do, there's a treasurer's report too. Do you want to do that one first?
Didn't I just do that?
Oh, you did that?
Yes.
Sorry, I must have, I'm blocked out for a second there.
It's probably my sound, I'm sorry.
No, you did it.
And it's Jeremy's fault.
It was my fault, for sure.
Yep.
All right, so my superintendent's report is gonna be pretty brief, but I want to sort of focus on the most important issues. So obviously, we have our budget vote, um, coming up on Monday. As everyone's aware, there was a great deal of difficulty around the state regarding ballots. And, um, we were actually, it may not feel this way, but we were one of the lucky few who actually got their ballots out, um, somewhat on time. Uh, we certainly would have liked them out sooner, but, uh, they're all out now. Uh, just speaking for myself, I have yet to receive the ballot for my school district or my children attend. And I know in reading reports over the last couple of days, some districts are doubtful their ballots will arrive before the Monday 5:00 PM deadline. Uh, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but our ballots are out. Obviously, the, the timeline has passed.
I didn't want to correct you, but Tuesday is the deadline.
Tuesday, sorry.
Yes.
So I would, at this point.
I got ballots from Lakeland today. I am not a voting member of the Lakeland School District.
Yes, I got three calls today from Putnam Valley school district residents who received Lakeland ballots. And I told them that I was jealous because I wasn't Lakeland and I didn't get my ballot. So, um, there's, it's, it's certainly not a seamless process. But that being said, uh, at this point, I would not encourage anyone to put their ballot in the mail to return because there would be no guarantee it would get here. But we have arranged for our office to be open. We have a ballot drop box, a secure ballot drop box available in the vestibule at the district office. Um, so if you check out the website, the district office has certain hours that'll be open. It has late hours on the Monday evening and it'll be open all day on Tuesday up until 5:00 PM to receive ballots. So if anyone that's out there and they've, uh, not yet mailed their ballot back, we would encourage them at this point to make arrangements to drop it off at the district office. And if you have any questions, I would encourage you to contact Ms. Maureen Bolino and, uh, she can guide you through the process. So if people haven't received ballots, um, what is the, what is their recourse at this point?
I have been mailing ballots to people and some people have made appointments with me to come in and pick them up. It is not a large amount by any manner, so, um, that's, appears to be a good thing.
Uh, all right, so moving on. I wanted to take an opportunity just to acknowledge one very special student of ours, uh, just because she's actually come onto my radar twice in the past week. So, uh, Ms. Michelle Pryor, um, was acknowledged both by the Hudson Valley Gateway, Chamber of Commerce Gateway and the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, where she was, uh, where she received a scholarship for math, science, architecture and engineer. So I know she's a very special student, a very talented student. She's gonna go on and do amazing things. Uh, but I did want to recognize her, um, within the last week of receiving two very prestigious scholarships.
Can I add in the, the superintendent's one? Nobody from Putnam Valley has won since 2014, 15.
Very proud of her. So just a quick couple, uh, public service announcements. So our senior farewell procession is scheduled for June 11th at 10:00 AM and that'll, uh, begin in the Putnam Valley Town Park. The Senior Palooza event is scheduled for June 12th at 9:00 AM. Uh, our graduation plans have been submitted to New York State. Both our primary plan and our backup plan have been submitted to New York State for their approval. Our eighth grade farewell procession is scheduled for June 19th at 10:00 AM, again, beginning in the town park. And our fourth grade farewell procession is scheduled for June 19th at 12:30 in the afternoon, again, beginning in the town park. I do want to take, uh, just a moment to thank the Putnam Valley Fire Department, who is gonna take the lead, um, lead all of these parades as well as our sheriff's department for sending vehicles, uh, along the route and to supervise the parade. So it'll, uh, sure be, surely be a great opportunity. Our students have the opportunity to decorate their cars and some of our teachers will be at the buildings, lining the driveways in their own cars so they can maintain social distancing, but also be there to say goodbye to their students. So those will be great opportunities for our students coming up. My last piece I wanted to mention is today we held our first full meeting of our reentry task force. So that's a committee of parents, administrators, teachers, uh, community members, safety consultants and laundry list of, laundry list of others. And our priority today was to break the larger group up into subcommittees. So I just wanted to quickly mention the four subcommittees. We have a health and safety committee. We have an educational programs committee. We have a social, emotional wellness and special education committee. And then we have a logistics committee. So the subcommittees will begin meeting next week and then we will report back the following week as a large, as for the whole task force. And that process will continue back and forth. There will likely be opportunities for additional members to be involved. So each of the facilitators of the subgroups has the ability to bring on additional members if there's a need within their subgroup. So I know there was some disappointment amongst teachers, amongst parents, community members and others who were not put on the initial task force. And I just want to sort of, two words of encouragement. One, this will be as open and transparent of a process as is entirely possible. And I value the input and feedback from any community member. So whether on the task force or a part of a subcommittee or not, I certainly welcome any opportunities to have conversations with community members regarding, uh, concerns they have, solutions they may be able to present. And I would be happy to bring those items back to the larger committee or one of the subcommittees. So, um, again, we value everyone's input. I think the more minds that we put into this task, the better our solution will be. And, uh, certainly those opportunities present themselves, uh, regardless of whether an individual was selected to be on the committee or not. So anyone out there listening or knows of anyone who has a particular interest or a particular skill set, I certainly encourage them to reach out to me and I would be happy to have a conversation with them. And if deemed necessary, uh, put them onto one of the subcommittees. And that's it. Natalie, Jeanette, I mean, Natalie, Jeanette, yeah, anything I left out? I covered it? Okay, thank you.
Maureen, have the ballots started coming in yet from the post office?
The ballots have started coming in from the post office. I would say we have approximately, uh, we had about 85 dropped off and about 200 have come in from the post office today.
Wow. Uh, the Westchester Portnum School Board's town call today, almost all the districts that are reporting say the, the increase is like tenfold over what they've had the last couple of votes. So just.
I wouldn't be able to say that yet. We don't, we don't have enough time yet.
Okay.
To look at that.
And in our district, it couldn't be tenfold. We have 6,000 registered voters and we had, um, uh, more than 600 voters last time, so.
We actually have now 7,194 voters. So we'll see what happens.
Okay. 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 All right, Maureen, have we gotten any public?
We had a congratulations to our retirees and no other comments. We had two congratulations to the tenure and the retirees, Chrissy Phillips and Jeannie Deny. We had two congratulations to the tenure and the retirees, Chrissy Phillips and Jeannie Denike, but there's no other questions on any other agenda items tonight.
So I could quickly read, I have the one, um, from Chrissy Phillips. So it says, "Congratulations to all the tenure recipients. It's such an exciting time in Putnam Valley. We're lucky to have each and every one of them." And then "Congratulations to our retirees as well. They will be truly missed, but I'm so happy for them as they get ready for the next chapter of their lives. Finally, a thank you to the board members and the administrators for making this such a special event for everyone. I'm honored to be a Putnam Valley teacher as well as a Putnam Valley community member. Signed, Ms. Chrissy Phillips."
And Jeannie Denike noted the retirees will all be deeply missed.
Okay. All right, then, moving on to new business. Mr. Ferraro, you have a lot to read for number one.
Just get it so I can see. There we go. Whereas the Board for Economic Considerations and the Efficiency of the Program has determined that it would be appropriate to abolish three FTE teaching assistant positions in the school district, therefore be resolved that the Board hereby abolishes three FTE teaching assistant positions in the teaching assistant tenure area effective close of business on June thirty, twenty twenty. And be further resolved that to the extent there are more employees in the tenure area of the abolished positions than there are remaining positions, the Board Clerk is hereby directed to provide written notice to those employees who shall be accessed in accordance with the provision of Section thirty thirteen of the Education Law, Part Thirty of the Region's Rules, and otherwise in accordance with the Education Law, the termination of their employment effective close of business on June thirty, twenty twenty. And be further resolved that said employees shall be notified in writing of their placement on an eligible's list in the teaching assistant tenure area regarding their entitlement to recall for a period of seven years from the date of the abolition of their positions.
Second.
Questions or comments? This kind of decision is never an easy one. And we wish everybody luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to award the bid for rubbish recycle and roll-off containers for the district. Also participating in this bid award would be the Brewster Central School District and the Carmel Central School District. Bid number twenty twenty dash twenty-one dash one to Oak Ridge Waste and Recycling of Danbury, Connecticut, the lowest bidder.
Second. Questions or comments?
So, uh, Jeremy, sorry, the fact that we are, um, or maybe Jill, the fact that we're co-bidding with two other school districts, has that benefited us by getting a lower price?
I believe it has. Um, we have collaborated with Brewster and Carmel School District and put together this bid in hopes that it would, um, help with the pricing. And it appears that that has happened, and, and all three districts have benefited from, uh, the group, the group bid. And, um, you know, it's something that, um, we just, um, put together, um, as, you know, business officials, uh, got together and discussed the fact that we were having, you know, difficulty in, in getting, um, companies to bid on what we thought was fair, and, and we managed to do that. So, uh, we're, we're glad we put our efforts together and did it.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three. Resolved to approve the twenty twenty twenty-one meeting dates of the Board of Education as per document number one seven nine slash twenty attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Being resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby creates the Civil Service Position of Business Manager in the District effective July first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Questions or comments?
For the, uh, those who are listening, this will be, uh, a position that's going to be, have the same responsibilities of our treasurer, but actually has more, and it's a civil service position. So once our treasurer, Ms. Figueroa, passes the exam, she will get this new title.
All right. Questions or comments, which we just had? Never mind. All in favor?
Aye.
And number five.
Resolved to approve the following as election inspectors for the June ninth, twenty twenty budget vote and board trustee election. Patty Barone, Elizabeth Broas, Lori Correa, Jeannie Denike, Marie Jeanette, Karen Geier, Dana Lopez, Kathy Maurice Mercico, Elizabeth Mellow, Deborah Montefiorente, Margaret Patterson, Maureen Patterson, Miriam Seglio, Karen Weezy, Gail Orafitchay as Chief Election Inspector.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anything, um, now opening its public contribution on anything? Are there any questions?
There's no public comments. None.
How about anything from the board? All right. So at this time, I would like to.
We were looking for twelve people. It's twelve.
Yes, right. Okay, it's twelve. I wasn't sure if it was eleven or twelve. Thank you. I would like, um, I would like to, uh, resolution to convene an executive session for twelve matters of the employment history of twelve particular persons, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Stay safe as always.